I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item we hear is the approve the regiments of the June 20th, 22th meeting. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
And while we're doing that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the claims except for the seed bed claim, which is a misprint. It should be seventy-nine-five, not seventy-nine-seven. Right. I mean, I just wanted to clarify the change on the agenda. The agenda's right, the claim's wrong. So that's my motion on that.
No, the claims are right, the agenda's...
Right, yeah. I said it very correctly.
Okay, so it says seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Right.
As you say it should be?
Five-eighty-eight.
Five-eighty-eight. Okay. Would that change? Would you like to second it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented with one alteration there. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. All claims are paid. And with that, we are ready for State Representative Mike Carroll. Good morning, Mike. I've talked to you several times on the phone. Having a good meeting. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir. Appreciate you hearing our request this morning, and I appreciate your service. You have a bridge just north of Burlington, Indiana, that is within eyesight of the boyhood home of a decorated Vietnam helicopter pilot and retired Kokomo police officer by the name of Don Mills. I received a phone call from a former colleague of mine. I worked for the city for many years, and I have with me today Tom Kelly, who is a veteran. He is an airman, and he's a retired Kokomo police officer. We actually knew Don and served with Don and worked with Don for decades. You should have received the packet I sent to your clerk. I'm sure she forwarded it. There's a letter from Judge Mendez attesting to his credentials. I know you got the information about his military service. He's a decorated helicopter pilot in Vietnam. And the state has a process that requires local units of government to approve any naming of a bridge request. And since Mill Street is right next to that bridge just north of Burlington, we'd like to put a sign up commemorating his service to our country and our state. And we need your permission to do that. And I brought with me Tom Kelly. He can tell you a little bit about Don if you'd like to hear.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Mill Street is where you live, you said?
Yep. He grew up on Mill Street. That's that little cut-through road on the south, on the north side of Tampa.
Goes down by the hill there.
Yep.
On twenty-two.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, welcome to Carroll County.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, and good morning. Glad to be here, and I appreciate your time and consideration. I knew Don Don. I had talked to him at length about his Vietnam service because he had a fascinating two-year army career. He was drafted. And when he found out that he was qualified for aviation training, he thought, well, that's a pretty good deal. That's a year-long training, and then I'll only have a year to serve. And how much trouble can I get into in a year? But as soon as he finished flight school, they sent him to Vietnam. And he earned a total of forty-two Air Medals. During Vietnam War, they were presented for combat flight time. And as he told me, there wasn't really anything else to do but fly. The particular action that we want to honor him for occurred in June nineteen-seventy, when his unit, the Hundred and Seventy-Fourth Airborne Aviation Company, was assigned to assist the units of the American Division and Allies in an operational sweep called Operation Iron Mountain. Took two years. And over the course of time, about four hundred of our soldiers were killed. But on that particular day, he was flying a command and control helicopter, and he found out that an Arvin unit had come under intense enemy fire, and they had casualties that needed to be evacuated. Well, his American commander instructed him to stay out of the area. It was just too hot, too dangerous. He flew in anyway, under intense fire. His co-pilot was killed, and he picked up the wounded and was able to get up there. Before that, he was awarded one of his forty-two Air Medals with the V device or valor, which is heroism under combat. And, you know, this bridge just north of Burlington, close to the place where he grew up as a kid, and probably played in that group. I think it'd be an apt place to remember some of the sacrifices that people have worked. You know, a lot of our kids don't even think about that anymore. To remember. And we'd like to do this for him. Do you have any questions?
This bridge is not named before, though, right?
It's not named. That's correct.
I think it was named for us with your grandparents. I'm gonna make a motion. Name was the Donaldville Bridge?
The Donaldville.
Donaldville?
Yeah. It says right here.
I know. More? Do you want to say something? Did I get honored somebody's? Serving our county, the country, is a lot of... All the veterans report to us. I agree with the folks' service. Me and a veteran myself, my dad served fifty-two months in the Civil War, too. So I love and respect the folks that's on that. I appreciate your service, and no matter what they do, what their business is, what they do.
Thank you for your service. I mean, I was talking to a young woman about this Top Gun movie that came out a few months ago, and she, because she found out I was in the Air Force, she had talked, you know, airplanes, movies. Top Gun was an Air Force movie. And, you know, our public anymore is so detached from the military that I think it's important to remind them as often as we can that there are people like you who have sacrificed and served for their benefit, for the freedoms that we enjoy.
There's a lot that tells us that you served a time in the past.
Right, absolutely.
People, their families, and sort of thing. It's just, people understand that. It's just happening rapidly. So the animal for us is great things. The motion is...
Thank you.
We have to do it. Well, thank you for coming. And I know that... I asked Mike to come today because I said I don't think I could properly represent this. I read all the information that he sent us and everything. I just felt that you two could do so much better job than I could of not only presenting it to my fellow commissioners, but to the public as well. We have a... My hometown, Kalam, which is just near Burlington, we have a gentleman who is a helicopter pilot in Vietnam, too. An overhauler. And he is a, I think he's a commander of the local DSW or whatever. Anyway, he's an incredible person. So I don't know, Don did not know him, but I can, I think, relate to him by others who've been through his experience. So I have before me a motion and a second to endorse this renaming, not renaming, but naming that bridge, the Donald L. Mills Bridge. And I would call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We thank you. Now, is there anything we have to send into the state, or?
If you would just email me a copy of the minutes where you have unanimously adopted this motion, I'll take care of the rest. The process will involve a, there'll be a summer committee hearing. There have been some instances in the past several years where legislators moved forward without the locals knowing what was going on. And so Chairman Pressle put in place a process. We're checking all the boxes. I had an email from Andrea Zimmerman, Andrea Zimmerman with Indot, confirming that the bridge has never been named, which was a question you brought up. We'll also have several other sign-ups, several other sign-offs from the administration. So hopefully, by this time next year, we'll be in touch for some sort of ceremony where we'll have Indot elected officials, veterans, to celebrate this. But we'll have a summer study committee meeting sometime in August where this will be recommended. I've reached out, I believe Senator Alting will be the new senator for Carroll County with the new maps. I've reached out to Senator Alting. I will be the co-author of the resolution. Representative Van Ader, since this is his district, he will be the lead author. I'm kind of handling this for him. I'm retired. He's still building houses. So appreciate your support, and you'll hear from us sometime in January, February when this moves. Thank you.
We would like to attend.
Oh, we want you there.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ted, do you have his email?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a notice that I prepared that's supposed to go to the paper, into the paper here tomorrow, that the editor is holding for confirmation that the date in the notice are good, and this relates to the DOT. So I told her as soon as I could I would confirm if the date is okay. It's a notice of a request for proposals for the jail. And the date that, and I've talked to Commissioner Skilton and Pearson outside of the meeting individually, and they confirmed they can attend, is to open the proposals on July twenty-first at four P.M. in this room. July twenty-first, four o'clock. It is just to open. There won't be any interviewing. Won't be any discussion. It will just be to publicly open the proposals at that time. Then they'll schedule a follow-up after that.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay, I'll...
What do you mean by scheduling a follow-up?
Well, they will contact your office in the days following that individually. They can be interviewed separately about the proposals. We don't know when that is. I mean, we don't know who the proposals, proposals will be coming from.
Well, we won't know the date that they can do that.
Well...
How do we know?
That can be scheduled outside of the, outside of the... That won't be done on the twenty-first.
Right. But you're saying they're gonna call in. How am I supposed to know when to tell them? Or am I missing something?
Well, we'll have another meeting between now and that time.
You'll have a meeting in eighteen?
Yeah.
As I said, I'm on vacation that week, but I'll come in on Monday just for the meeting. I won't be here on the twenty-first. I'll have one of the girls today.
So I'll let the paper know. That's all I have.
Okay.
Ted, I'm letting her know. I'm letting the editor know, yeah.
There was text at the end of the thing that's coming out, so I've sent her, I've sent that to her.
Okay.
Kim?
Oops, sorry.
Sorry.
I just sent it to her. These lines come out.
I like the last...
And I sent her a cleaver, so everything is okay. She knows. She knows.
Yeah, we had a conversation about this.
There's a couple meetings. I think it was last meeting. But we have a contract for them to sign. That they've actually, did you get a copy of the signed contracts from these guys? Okay. All in is your signature, then I'll forward this contract out to Indot. Our funds started from that.
Can you add a motion to sign the contract? The way I approved it, right, so I do this already?
Right.
All right, so you can sign it.
Thank you.
Is there anything anybody wants to ask, Kim?
I'll sit down.
You need it. How many of these are there? Two?
Uh, three.
Three? I just sent you my... Can you hear this? Well, I expect my agenda on that. I don't like that. Oh, EDC Director Jay. Good morning, Jay.
Good morning. I appreciate everyone's time. We hopefully tend to be able to distribute some information about our contract that we've been working on. So finally, after about six months of working through agreements, formalizing our contract, we do have a draft. And Ted, were you able to share that with?
I was told that it was confidential.
Yeah, it's confidential.
Just, but just, just any outlines of the details or?
No, when somebody tells me it's confidential, I don't reach the confidentiality.
Sure.
So I'm talking with the attorneys to try to get them to give us, let us know what we can share.
So it's a contract between White Cast R E M C and EDC. And it can be classified as a confidential document. So I prepared the confidentiality agreement to, for commissioners to approve between EDC and the county so that we could legally distribute information from that to commissioners, council, whoever needs, needs to know on a need-to-know basis. But it's, otherwise, it's a public record, and so they haven't seen it. It didn't, it, otherwise, it would become a public record.
Well, and I just wanted to make sure if there was any information from it that you didn't share. So if that's the case, then, so at this point, we're gonna try to move forward with executing the contract with Miami Cast R E M C. None of the, as we got through all the details of the contract, none of the details have changed from our initial presentation to you guys and the council when it comes to cost, timeline, homes, miles, things like that. So we were thankful that Miami Cast R E M C was able to keep most of that intact and keep all the necessary items we needed in order to deploy broadband in the county. So we, it just took a little bit longer than we anticipated. So I think at this point, once we get confidentiality signed, that we would ask the commissioners to actually approve.
No, I'm sorry, Dick.
In other words, this, from what you see, the information that doesn't get distributed to the public generals.
You don't wanna stay in there. I'm just saying, you're gonna be big. The problem is, I think we're getting the different agreements confused. We've got the agreement that the EDC has with Miami Cast R E M C, and we have the agreement that we're still finalizing between EDC and the county. So I didn't, I didn't want the public to get confused about what agreement we were talking about in this instance. But we do have the Miami Cast R E M C agreement with the EDC worked out in terms that we believe that are agreeable and reflecting what you want to see for the county. And we then are just waiting for Ted to be comfortable with the document and comfortable with the arrangement between all of us so that he can finalize the contract between the EDC and the county for the distribution of those funds. So I'm sorry, Dick and I haven't had a chance to actually talk face-to-face about this.
It was fourth of July, so, holy cow. So, yeah, so the ideal part now is, once you guys are comfortable with the language and the amended contract that Ted would be drafting, correct, between our, the our organization and the county, then we'd be able to execute the broadband deal. That's essentially where we're at. So I was, I was once in the head on our agreement with Miami Cast, because I've been so ingrained. So that's, that's where we're at.
So now, Ted, as far as the execution of this, you should... Yes. It all pertains to the agreement between R E M C and EDC. And their economic development corporation and the U N A O statutes give them the latitude of preserving confidentiality, you know, finances and so forth of companies that they are going to be receiving monies from. Because the money they're gonna actually distribute it to the R E M C by EDC. So this document preserves the confidentiality. In other words, anybody that is on a need-to-know basis with this project on the county's side about the terms of their agreement, this protects that.
Can we run ahead this one before?
Yeah, you need to have to be able to see what they have agreed.
Right.
Yeah. Because they, they do not want it shared with anybody.
Right, it protects both companies?
Yes.
Somebody can jump in and say, hey.
Now, the counties are bringing EDC to put this open publicly.
And to also clarify, and this is a very complicated situation. We won't be asking you to approve our contract with the R E M C, but obviously, we want you to be comfortable with those terms. So that, that's why we're trying to work this out so that you understand what we're doing and you're comfortable with it, but you won't be actually approving this contract.
That's correct. Yeah, but you don't wanna sign nothing with them, but something in the other contract you don't like.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, here. These, these structures are complicated and complex. Trying to keep our true North right. Our focus is getting profit into our community through all the legal requirements and private companies. Because it's the Wild West, and we talked about that when you guys instituted the Broadband Ready Ordinance. It kind of, it made a pathway in a more refined space in getting broadband investment from the county. So it's still somewhat bureaucratic, but this is really the best-case scenario.
Basically, this is supposed to be broadband, but it's hard to handle. Handle that. I mean, we all know your...
You will know the point of need-to-know basis, because you need to know, to know what you need to put in our agreement with EDC. But you can't disseminate that information of the terms of their agreement because of confidentiality. So this gives you access to that agreement. If they, if EDC agrees to it all as well.
We want a full access.
You will have full access to their agreement. That will be public.
So this isn't anything to do with our county, with EDC, that?
Not at all. We need to know what their terms were before we can mirror them or...
Change.
Yeah, as far as the county's interest.
You just gotta make sure your ducks are in, really, that one, one go run around from the back to the front. Chief, basically, it's a...
And we want to be sure that you feel like you're getting what we've all been talking about. So we want, we want to be sure that you're comfortable and are, have confidence that what we are doing is as you expect.
And you guys giving autonomy to us to go negotiate that over the last six months has been really helpful. We felt like you guys have our back to be able to get the best deal for the county possible and negotiate it on private terms. And we've done that now, and we get the chance, I think the county gets a chance when you move forward with this to reap the benefits of that negotiation.
Ted, would you frame a motion for us?
Motion to approve the confidentiality agreement between the Carroll County and the EDC.
I want to make that motion. Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second, and Ted framed it, for us to endorse this agreement confidential, confidentiality agreement. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Who's the president of EDC now?
Reddard.
I just noticed it says title president, but it didn't have his name on here.
And Ted, before you share that document, I'd like to get back to the attorneys and tell them that this is signed.
Sure.
Okay, then we give office for this after the meeting, or now, or?
After the meeting.
It's okay.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Now we are ready for Cindy Wacker. I actually have someone here from Deer Creek. We appreciate it.
Yes, we're really busy. The Deer Creek Community Center started back in the early eighties with a grant from Eli Lilly. And the purpose was to help develop a center spot for community gathering, information sharing. We have a beautiful...
The original is on...
Done a lot of upgrades. We currently have a wired-in generator so that it's a spot the power goes out for extended period of time. We top it with a red cross, more emergency shelter, which we haven't used thankfully for a couple of years if we had a big snow five or six years ago. But we have cots, we have blankets, we have the generator, we have cooking facilities. We host scouting groups, forage groups, all kinds of things. We are currently interested in asking for some of the American Recovery or Rescuing.
Yeah, the European.
Yeah, that. Funding, we'd like twenty-five thousand dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, but we've gotten some bids for an electronic sign. And we're thinking we could use this not just for our personal use of advertising the next chicken dinner, but road conditions, you know, the roads closing ahead, turn on four, turn left on Four Hundred North and, you know. You know, be to our information. Silver alert, amber alert, weather warnings. It could definitely be a very good informational piece. And there is a lot of traffic on Twenty-Ninth. Yes, and it would be right there. We hardwired it, so even if the generator had to kick on, the sign would still go, and we could take. It's all there, you know. Can't travel farther north, can't go south. Come on in, get warm, we'll come puppy.
He's in charge of this, isn't he?
Uh, I've been on the board of directors for, I don't know, probably twenty years. Lois Wallace is our president. She's a half township trustee. We have, I'm trying to think how many folks. We have people not just from Deer Creek, but Karen Johnson, an entire schoolteacher for Carroll. We have a couple folks, Scott and Christine, all of all from just over the line into Washington Township and Cass County. So we have a nice, broad representation of the group. We have four hundreds or more people that are members in the community. We rent out the buildings on weekends or through birthday parties, Kings and Ares, retirement parties. It's a, it's a nice little facility. If you have not been there, you should come on up. It's a voting center for early voting. We, we've never turned anybody away. We, uh, we've never turned anybody away if they need a, a spot to meet, so.
I've been there many times and I'm always impressed. I wish that every community in the county...
I, I didn't bring anything with me because I wasn't sure, unsure what you'd, you know, would you like copies of the S and S and why you have any interest in it.
Hey, well, you wouldn't notice that. We've had a lot of requests.
Oh, I see.
So we just have to, uh, look at all of them, see what we can do and if we can do all the parts or what we can do. I mean, it sounded like we had a huge pot of honey coming in, but this time everybody gets done with the proposals, why, uh, we're using them.
Well, we would love to have the whole twenty-nine, but if we can't do that, we would love some toward the goal. Because we have been doing a little country and goals a lot.
And the, the sign that you're looking at, it will be twenty-five thousand dollars?
Uh, it's like twenty-three something.
Okay.
And then the wiring, the base and all of that would be extra.
Basically, when you come back to us, we have quotes for everything.
Okay.
For a full part of it. That would help us a lot.
Okay.
And while we like to have you come into meetings, if you want to just give that information to Beth, she can just go make sure to do it.
Oh, that's okay. I did have to take a day off work for this.
We, we do have the local signs for things like the emergency things.
Well, sure, but if the roads are bad, then there's a challenge of somebody to get it up there.
I understand, but those are available. Yeah, a permanent sign would be nice.
Can't remember.
Somebody to manage that, operate.
Yes, and, and we wouldn't even have to be there to update the sign. You know, it's all electronic, you can do it from the computer.
Computer, okay. It's a plus.
Yes, and we did have Mike Fincher come up.
Yes.
It's been almost a year ago now and talk about reasons it's a good idea and, uh, and ways to, to get this done, so.
Well, the guidelines on this, like, so, okay, I'll put it on. Something like that, or... That's what's possible.
Thanks for letting me come.
Thank you very much.
I will use all of the information. All right, and then you'll let me go read something else.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug.
Good morning. Um, you guys should, I think, Ted forwarded to you our, our agreement with Malcom that does our fuel tax credit. Uh, we get money back from, it's just the contract needs to be renewed for another, I think, two years. Uh, so that's just what that is, is to, so we can keep getting our fuel tax credit and money back.
How much have you got back so far?
Uh, I think we got fifty-five hundred.
That might be a couple times the gas nowadays.
Yeah, about maybe.
How long will it be until you recall?
Um, I think this would be our first time renewed, but I'm, like, second every time.
They, they come first.
They do our, they do our Medicaid, Medicare cost report to, to get more money back from, um, Medicaid. They do that, that contact as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
So this, this is just for the state tax on the, on the field?
Yes. As far as...
That's one I second, uh, far down.
And it's just for the field that we use to transport patients, which basically just what we're...
So they said, well, used to do. I'll second.
And I think there's a, in, in a power of attorney form.
Yeah, the, the second motion then would be to approve the power of attorney, this partner revenue form in order for Malanowski Consulting to communicate with them directly. So that requires separate...
Different power of attorney.
Uh, no, to give the, uh, the, Malanowski Consulting, they're the ones that actually will apply for this for the county.
So second motion would be for us to allow them to use our information. Sign the power of attorney?
Yes, sign the power of attorney.
Frank, you also need to know that there is a, a fee for, for doing this, that we've done it in here.
Okay, so we have those two motions for us, one to endorse this and one for the, uh, power of attorney. And we have a motion, a second for each of them, so I call for a vote. Let's go, I'll know them at the same time. All in favor of both motions, please say aye.
Aye.
The pass. There are so many blanks on here to fill in, it's going to take a little bit...
No, there, the only one that needs signature is the citizenship page, Bill.
The power of attorney, what I don't have to do?
Uh, no, it, it's actually being done for the county by the firm. So you're authorizing the firm to apply to the partner revenue for, for these refunds.
So you need to sign...
So it's last, uh, just the, uh, sign of paragraph seven.
Okay.
Did you sign that one to page four?
Page four.
Page four.
Still fully staffed? Were you busy that time again?
Uh, I, I don't think it was too busy. I've been busy a lot.
Yeah, you go baby set the fire department, make sure everybody was okay. It was pretty hot that day, but putting that one out, it's on the floor.
You have to send anybody up, uh, near White Oak for... No, that would have come out of my side.
Well, I think, I think we were on standby as well.
You were on standby as well. Bad. Okay, I'm, uh, getting here, so I'm sorry. You're going to pick up that?
Yep. That'd be fine. Thank you.
Any two that are... All right, I'm going to agree those. Am I running a halftime?
Yep.
Okay, well, then I'll go over other reasons. Now, Ted and I had the, uh, opportunity to sit down with, uh, Apex, Mr. Sylvester and...
Steve Weston.
Huh?
Steve Weston.
Steve Watson. And so they're going to make a presentation here, I think, to us concerning our, our, uh, health, uh, insurance, and that is in, uh, nine fifty.
Ten o'clock. He'll be here at ten, so.
He'll be at ten? We just lost Doug, did we? Now? Okay, um...
Want to go down to the others then?
Pardon me?
Want to go down to the other commissioner?
Yeah, yeah.
I have, um, a letter for the Northwest Solid Waste District to be reimbursed. And I love to explain what I was talking about last meeting was that when I said we had to pay our proportions, we do, we have to pay to Northwest Solid, uh, we have to pay our bills because we have so many monthly bills that Northwest Solid Waste District probably would not want to do that. But, um, Kirsten does it a different way. She can send it to them, so, to the Northwest Solid District, just the bill and they'll pay it back directly. Yours is different than what our grant is. So I have a letter here somewhere, whatever, right there. To be assigned to get reimbursed sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. And what we give reimbursed, I'm, it's for, um, both of the recycle, um, employees, their wages and in part, uh, Kirsten's and all the recyclable bills.
And then, uh, they also approved to do the cameras, gentlemen, so I'll have you to go ahead and do the...
The what?
The cameras.
Oh.
So they're paying that thirty-nine hundred dollar bill, grabbing.
Steve, thanks for taking care of it.
Well, I took a chance and went ahead and proven it before, poppin' YouTube, but I couldn't do it without it and making, kind of timeframe on the estimate, so.
Okay, that's good. So we need to endorse this, uh, recycling grant, uh, letter here, right? So I was going to, take that for this year.
There's six months.
Six months. It's for sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Sixteen, eight, nine, four, forty-eight. Now do we entertain a motion? Okay, so I have a motion and a second, um, endorse this letter and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Assign. Next, I have courthouse grounds application for a farmer's market kids zone. Good morning.
Morning, commissioners.
I think we're going to see you a lot.
Yes, that's good.
It's okay, yeah.
Likewise, we can see you. Yes, so the, uh, request from the Delphi Main Street, uh, we're also in, uh, discussion with, uh, with the, doing Delphi that goes on also, uh, been on our farmer's market dates, uh, which starts the third Saturday in July, so on that sixteenth. And then we'll run the first and third Saturdays through October. Uh, we've had some inquiries from some parents as to whether we would, uh, entertain having some kids come, set up some tables, if some kids make some different crafts and be a part of this. And of course, that is something that, that we do want to encourage and welcome. And so with that, although it may not be necessary for addition of space, we want to come forward commissioners, if we could have use of the grounds, should we have some kids come that want to set up a table, tent and sell some of the crafts that they make, we would be able to have them on the grounds if necessary. Obviously, we, you know, we have approval already on the street, we're having some more discussion tonight with the board of works on, uh, expanding that just in case we may need it. Um, and of course, that would be an excellent problem to have, uh, should we, uh, should we have that, but, uh, this is for purposes, if necessary, if we have some children that want to participate in the farmer's market on that, those Saturdays designated for the artisan in addition to the farmer's market.
Okay, are you setting up the farmer's market on Market Street or where are you?
At, at present, uh, we have approval from board of works to be on Market Street, yes.
Okay. So the grass, or you would want to pour on the site some, right?
Well, tonight before board of works, we're, we're going to request an expansion to be able to, uh, not only Market Street, which we already have approval for, uh, but also Franklin and Washington Street on the courthouse side. So not necessarily to block the streets from traffic, but on the courthouse side where the parking spots are. Um, and then also the sidewalk could be some overflow. So the thought would be if we hit that, you know, capacity, uh, to perhaps have the kids' own up near the gazebo.
That's nuts. Uh, so you're doing it the first and third Saturdays and Cameron's doing it the second Saturday of every month, is that the way of, when you're working on it?
Uh, Cameron couldn't, I'm not, I'm not, uh, certainly aware of that.
The guy who wrote that comma, there's going to be a second.
Second Saturday. I think you're right because it was starting to grow pretty decent there, Cameron, when it comes in, when people found out about it.
Then ours, like, starts the sixth, July sixteenth, first and third Saturday through October. We have, it's all farmer's market, all of those times, nine to noon on Saturdays. Then there's also some dates that we have designated on the flyer, which I submitted. And then also... Okay. You know what, I have a couple of... But all those dates designated for the artisan in case there would be, in case there would be some interest from some children that want to set up a table and again have a craft that they make or something, it's a great way to grow that entrepreneurial spirit. Yes. Nine to noon.
The only thing is they can't stick nothing in the ground, you know?
Correct, sir, yes.
I'll make the motion. I think it's a great thing. There's, uh, more wires buried out here under the wall and I think, I mean, most, a lot of them are out there on this side, but not back there. And Steve's right, we always ask Thompson, um, stakes and do that kind of stuff. So you made a motion, the word seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass.
Thank you, commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh... Will you be using restrooms?
No, no service.
Huh?
We will not.
No. That's what I was looking for, too. I was just on, I didn't see. He's there.